Created that it missed Memorial Day opening. So but with a lot of hard work from some of our commission members and the staff, we got everything taken care of. It made Somerset County Board of Health happy and we were able to open. We had to replace fourteen drain covers in the pools which are already filled with water. We had a broken water supply line that was buried underground to the the slide. And we also had a broken water supply line in the women's bathroom that was embedded in the concrete block walls that had to be repaired. And that's what prevented us from opening. Once the pool opened, we had a very uneventful summer, very normal summer, no emergencies, no drama, no nothing, which was great. After two years of considerable drama with the Aqua Lights, the Synchro team, they had a fantastic year last year. Their team had twenty-eight girls on it. There were a few small glitches, but nothing major. We I found an article in AARP. There's a senior citizens women's Synchro team in Brooklyn that is very active. And I gave that to the woman who heads the Synchro team here. We are the only Synchro team in the state of New Jersey, recreational Synchro team in the state of New Jersey. And she's going to contact them to see if they'll come and visit with the girls next year, next season, which will be exciting. Big Hugs Daycare had their end of the summer party at the pool for the first time. It went fantastic. They are super excited to come back next year and we're excited to have them. We had the Elks again this year. They we during closure of the pool, either before the pool opens for the day or later in the day, they bring autistic kids in that can't handle crowds. And we let them hang out at the pool for two hours with just them. They bring in some food and coffee and stuff and they have a pretty good time and we're happy to do that. We had three long course teams that rent the pool for practice this year. Hopefully we'll expand the use of the pool by one of the teams next year. And we're considering other projects and events, hopefully to be able to propagate a stronger sense of community in Middlesex rather than just people coming to swim. As far as budget, I gave the whole council our preliminary final budget because it's not done till the end of the year. We put our estimated costs for the rest of the year in there and gave an estimated total income and expenses for the year. And then we gave him a very preliminary budget for 2026. There's still a lot of numbers that have to be vetted and and sussed out on that. So it's really very rough. As far as membership, very happy with our membership this year, considering we missed the first three weekends of opening. Our membership was virtually the same as last year. So considering all the problems we had, to have the same amount of memberships this year as last year, I consider it a win. Hopefully we will be able to add to it next year. We're looking to add a new membership to the to our four memberships now, which is starting to pop up at other swim clubs for team members of swim teams because they're particularly the kids that are twelve and thirteen and older are just coming for practice and they don't want to pay a whole family membership or single membership to just be on the swim team. So we're considering strongly considering adding a swim team membership so the kids that are twelve or thirteen or older will just pay for practice, for the Aqua Lights, for the swim team and meets and things like that. And then won't have access to the pool at any other time, which will be a lot less expensive than buying a family membership. So we're looking to add that. Software. Software is another thing. In 2008, we started using software for membership. In 2020, we changed companies. Unfortunately, we lost all of our data prior to 2020. With the the software that we have now, we can have accountability. We can see all of our membership numbers, all of the different memberships, how many people joined. We can keep track of the the revenue coming in, the income coming in from memberships and things like that, which we couldn't do in our old membership software. Esoft, which is the company, they're doing a major upgrade to the software, which will be available in November, which we're excited about because it'll enable us to do have a lot more accountability with our numbers in recording swim swim lessons and things like that. So we're excited about that and that's going to be available to us in November. Fees. Unfortunately, everything gets more expensive. The example I use is chlorine. Chlorine has gone up approximately three hundred percent in the last two to three years along with labor and everything else at the pool. So the commission is now discussing raising the the fees for memberships through the pools for for this coming 2026 summer season. We also with the packet I gave the council, there's also the fees for five of the surrounding pools, public and or private pools that Kim Mazzi actually put together for us. And one thing we noticed is that we have early registration. People can pay a little bit less if they register early versus later. And one of the things we noticed in the other pools that do that is the spread between early register and regular registration is much larger than ours. Ours is only twenty dollars difference. So we've discussed now making that difference larger over the next few years when we increase rates. So people will be more more apt to join early as opposed to late. Right now, a twenty dollar difference doesn't seem to make any difference to people. So that's the fees. Just in general, the pool facility was built in the mid-sixties, so it's over sixty years old, sixty years old now. It's starting to feel its age. We're starting to see a lot of little things happen at the pool that need to be replaced. So the end of this summer, I had Steven Bird, our manager, start doing a honey to-do list of things that might need to be fixed or replaced over the next few years. And he's given me quite a long list of some easy things, some cheap things and some not-so-cheap things to to consider and things we're going to have to put in our budget that are going to have to be fixed or replaced. I don't know if any of you, some of you do know, the snack bar roof got blown off in March of this past year. And Lenny and the DPW were great enough to put tarps over it for the summer. So that's something we're going to have to deal with come this spring before the pool opens, which we're looking at some creative ways to lower the cost of replacing the roof. We have a hot water system that's, let's just say, old. And it's it's living on borrowed time. We thought we were going to have to replace it this year, but fortunately, through the work of the staff, we were able to have it work all summer. Hopefully we'll get it to work again this year, no problems. But the replacement of the water system is approximately thirty thousand dollars. So that's another thing we have to add in. We're looking at private companies. Since the pool opened, the staff has always opened and closed the pools every year, which takes a huge amount of work. And our our managers work full-time jobs. And then they have to work to open the pool, which takes many, many hours. So we had three companies come in to give us estimates to open and close the pools. And one company who has been around for approximately fifty years, they're in the third generation, they actually gave us costs for each pool individually to open each one or to close each one, which the other ones just gave us a number for the whole property, which was fifty-five thousand dollars, which is not going to happen. So now we're considering at least looking at having the main pool, which is an Olympic-sized pool, have them come in and open that pool and prepare it to be filled because it would it would save our managers a huge amount of time and worry if they didn't have to go through the process of opening the pool every year. So we're considering that. But again, another expense. Anything else? And then there are just a few requests, which I'll submit these through email or something. We want to make some changes to the ordinance. The ordinance is old and it has a minimum membership of a thousand. And the ordinance counts a family membership as one, a single membership as a half, and a senior membership as zero. We haven't counted memberships like that for eons. We count a membership as a membership. Like you'll see on the numbers, we have between thirteen and fourteen hundred memberships. So we would like to get that removed from the ordinance. We also want to get the fees removed from the ordinance because every time we want to change fees, we have to submit to you guys and then you guys have to vote on it so we can raise our fees. I want to take the fees out of the ordinance so we can just vote as a commission to raise or to modify the fees, whatever we're going to do. And then we would notify you through a letter or whatever that we're changing the fees from this to this. It just would make things much easier for the commission if we could vote, a majority vote at a meeting and be done with it and move on to something else instead of waiting for two or three or four weeks for the council to do what they have to do to change the ordinance. So that's one thing we want to have removed. We need to add a noise rule to our rules that are in the ordinance because we had an issue this year with people bringing those little powerful speakers blasting music out of their iPhones or their phones, disturbing anybody around them. So now we're going to add a noise ordinance to prevent that from happening so people don't have to listen to other people's music when they're there to relax or read or whatever. So that's something we're going to add, you know, give to you guys to put in the ordinance because the rules are in the ordinance. And then my final request is a big one. When we built the new, the lat pool and did all the new modifications to the pool in 2015, we bonded out to do that, which the pool has bonded out five times for capital improvement. We've never taken a tax dollar. We've always paid the bonds back since the pool was opened. But our payment is seventy-eight thousand plus dollars a year. And when the borough was originally bonding it out, it was supposed to be a twenty-year bond and the payment was supposed to be significantly less. Well, they bonded out for ten years and the payment was seventy-eight thousand plus dollars. That's killing us right now. And the ten-year bond this year was our last payment on that bond. The money we have left is the borough made agreements, and I don't know how they did it, but to to extend the payments beyond the bond. So now that the bond is paid off, we're asking the council to consider lowering the payment from seventy-eight thousand to fifty thousand, which is much more palatable and would go a long way to our budget because right now we're, it's very tough for us to cover expenses from membership and other forms of income. If we could lower that payment, it would make financially the pool a much more viable place financially. So that's that's really my last last piece of information. And I gave you all the numbers for membership and the budgets and everything in front of you.
Okay, I do have a couple of questions. And just regarding that that bond issue, the bond issue was, the bond was paid off in ten years. But the payment that you made to the borough was based on a twenty-year bond. So basically, the borough absorbed the the upfront cost because it was such a good rate to get the the ten-year rate. That's that's how that came about. It's not like the the bill's paid off and we're still charging you guys.
No, no, I know the bill's not.
Well, I think it just needed to be clarified because it didn't sound like that when people were out there listening to it. You know, that's actually something that we'll have to discuss, you know, whether it's something that we really want to entertain. A couple of things going back, you know, one of the things that's here on, it's quite obvious that our our pool rates are very favorable compared to everyone else around here. But what would be a a good piece of information to have is what's what's the membership at these other pools? You know, that's something, I mean, if you add the rates, maybe you have some friends there that could tell you.
Well, the rates just came from their websites.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
So like Bound Brook's three hundred.
Yeah, but we don't know how many members they have. I don't know that you could.
And I have to be honest with you. I'm sure, and I don't know this for a fact, but I'm sure Bound Brook Pool gets money from the county. Bound Brook Pool was in dire straits years ago. They were not going to open. And all of a sudden, they spent over a million dollars.
Yeah, they weren't open and then all of a sudden it did. Yeah, I know.
And Orin Brook Pool, they put a huge addition of a hot tub on, they redid the whole property and everything. So I'm convinced that the county, there was money from the county that that they got.
Yeah, listen, I have I have no doubt about that. One of the other things is in your budget, right? When you're under maintenance, you know, it's it's basically, it's like fifty grand a year, forty, fifty, goes back and forth. Is that is that direct expenses or is any part of that building an accrual to for bigger bills as they come along?
No, actually, that is just in there for things to go wrong, like this year, the the grades were fourteen thousand dollars.
Right, that was at the beginning.
So it's to cover anything like that. Because like I said, now with the pool being sixty years, it seems like every year there's something, because the winter time takes its toll on the facilities, being closed and not heated and everything. It takes its toll on the facilities.
Sure. So to to get back to it is that where does the money come? If these are all direct expenses, something big goes wrong. Where's the money come from?
Well, fortunately, the pool commission over the years has been very good savers when there were surpluses. And we do have about two hundred thousand dollars in three accounts.
So basically, you have you have like money in the bank.
But I but I'm.
You don't want to spend it, but it's it's.
No, I get it. But I'm what I'm telling you is is based on the increase in labor and everything else involved, is that every year that surplus has decreased for the last three or four years.
What's up? Right here. You're running out of loss right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
That that surplus is down to about a hundred thousand right now.
Right.
Well, no, as far as the last financials, the total amount was about two hundred thousand.
Not from Carolyn. Talking to Carolyn.
I'm just looking at the Joe, I'm just looking at the financials that we got through through October.
I mean, we could we could find out the real number, that's easy enough. But I'm just saying, right now, you're running a little bit out of loss.
No, I know.
And I know, I mean, the best, the difference this year from a loss and a profit was fourteen thousand, well, it's eleven here, but you know, those grades that came up.
Well, it was thirteen thousand and then thirty-four hundred for the bathroom fix and another fourteen hundred for the supply line.
Right, which are not normal maintenance items. That's the ones that took you out. Okay. All right. I mean, like I said, the numbers here speak for themselves. I mean, the rate's a little on the low side, but you know, we offer, it's a service, you know, so then it becomes a business decision. How far do you go?
I mean, we have raised rates several times over the last several years, but we can't just.
Well, you just don't want to price yourself out.
That that's what I'm saying. We can't just increase the memberships a hundred dollars each because we'll just lose members by doing that. So we're trying to, we're trying to boil the frog out of from cold water.
Do you have a proposed, do you have a proposed or what what are the membership fees are you thinking about for next year?
We we actually just started discussing them at our September meeting. In October, November, we'll make something more concrete. Everybody has the numbers. We discussed them, what we want to do. Sorry, September, November and December, because they have to be finalized by the beginning of next 2026. So so I'm hoping that we'll get all that stuff removed from the ordinance. So all we have to do is vote on and have to go through the council.
Yeah, right now, you're capped with about five percent?
It's actually ten percent per year or thirty percent over five years.
You know, and at the at the same time, we're not looking to go thirty percent. Obviously, we're not, we're not trying to get there. We're not even trying to get to ten percent. We just want to make sure.
With ten percent, it would be thirty bucks.
Right, but at the same time, you just want to go through this and make sure that it's it's a viable entity. Because if you don't, if you don't address some of these problems the right way, you're going to go five years. And then whether you go to the pool or you don't go to the pool, you're paying for the pool, you know? So that's, you know, that which is not a road that you guys want to go.
It's fortunate that the software gives us the numbers for the memberships because now we can say, okay, if we want to increase the family membership thirty dollars and last year we had two hundred and fifty family memberships, we can get a pretty good estimate as long as there's no huge wholesale changes in different memberships. We can get a a pretty good estimate of what each membership increase will bring into us as far as revenue and income, which helps a lot.
Well, I mean, quite honestly, it's one of the best pools around, period.
I have to be honest with you. I had three companies come in to look at the pools and two of the companies do major like Rutgers and Princeton, major complexes on opening and closing pools and stuff. Every single one of them said, this is the most amazing public pool in the state of New Jersey. There is no complex like this anywhere.
Okay.
And then I told them the prices and they almost fainted.
So Mark, that was my thing there was the prices. I mean, obviously, I'm looking at it now. So Bound Brook's the closest, right? Everything else from there, the next closest is awards, you know, which is thirty minutes away, but that's, you know, it's in the county, but that's another, it's a it's a hundred bucks more. And then from there.
You're about twenty-five percent less than everybody else.
Willa Grove, they're all in the five hundreds.
Well, again, we're trying to.
I know.
Without increasing the memberships, huge amounts, we're trying to get a little more. And we have a property, Bound Brook is a pool essentially, and that's it. Yeah, I mean, we have a property here, a big property with grass and, like I said, Big Hugs came in, they, I think they had two or three hundred people here. They loved it. I mean, they didn't just like it, they loved it. And they used to have it in the gazebo in the park. And, you know, now they have a pool that people can swim in during the party. They brought in a food truck, they brought in some other stuff because we have the space to do all that stuff.
Another question. This is strictly pool, not Snack Shack or anything like that, right?
That's everything.
That's everything.
The snack bar is something that we, I'm going to have out separately. We're going to do the snack bar and then we're going to put our three main vendors on what we spend on them. And then the rest of it will just be part of miscellaneous. So.
But they're included in this number right now.
They are, yeah.
Which is actually a good thing because if I remember right, that was a loss leader, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The snack bar is a funny thing. One, like, I forget how many years ago, we did one month of nineteen thousand dollars in one month, just gross profit. That's never happened. So the snack bar is up and down every year. It's not something that you can really say, okay, we did it this year, next year, we're going to do about that much.
It doesn't work.
No, it really doesn't. It's very fickle.
Have you ever considered leasing the snack bar after someone else?
We did, but the problem is the snack bar typically works at a loss and we don't see, I don't see anybody wanting to come in to do anything with. And see, the snack bar is not like a restaurant. When people go to a restaurant, they go to eat or drink. When people come to the pool, they don't come to eat. So it's not really a crowd that is coming there just for the snack bar. Someday, you you could have a hundred people at the snack bar, the next day you could have twenty people at the snack bar. So it's not something we can really count on because people aren't there to eat, they're there to be at the pool. And the snack bar is really just a convenience for them.
Why do you, like, the out-of-area get so much longer for the always?
No, they don't. They they start May first. They can start joining May first. Borough residents can start March fif- March first. And they get a month, they get till April fifteenth for a discount. And the non-residents only get fifteen days.
It just, it just seems like you would want them to sign up earlier so they were still committed to join. It would seem like May fifteenth is late as the season's starting to have people commit to the pool. I would think you'd want it earlier than a year then.
Well, March first, they start March first. Residents start March first.
Right, but the non-residents, I'm saying, I would think you'd want the non-residents to sign up earlier than the residents.
Well, we're.
Before they commit to somewhere else.
That's, that was actually originally, I believe, in the ordinance because they wanted Middlesex residents to have first shot. Because there was a time when pool membership sold out. And then there was a waiting list. So we did, that was done early, early on, before my time even, because of that. So they would give Middlesex residents first shot before they would sell out. But that doesn't happen anymore.
How far off of being sold out are you?
It's hard to say because the ordinance calls for a thousand, but that's if you count seniors at zero. And half. And we have other memberships now. We have a couples' membership that isn't in the ordinance for the part of that one, half and zero. So you really can't, I mean, we had thirteen hundred and twenty-four members this year, memberships, let's say, which is probably three or four thousand people, join the pool with families and things like that. So it's really hard to say because, like I said, that thousand is not, we don't do that. We haven't done that for years, counted memberships like that.
Is there a max amount of people you can let in the door before you gotta say no more?
Technically, yes. And I want to say it's around six or eight hundred people, which we've never hit. Because again, it's a transient crowd. People come for an hour, they leave. People come for two hours, they leave. People come all day, they leave. So.
But at any one time, there should be no more than like eight hundred people?
Yeah, yeah. And we've never come close to that at one time. We've had that many in a day, but not at one time.
Okay. One last question I had. Maybe I I missed it. You were doing the mural project.
Yes.
Is it done?
No, unfortunately, we have college students that are the artists. And the the wall on the front gate is painted, the the background is all painted, but the mural's not there. And they just ran out of time. They went back to school mid-August and they were going to come back, try to get back on weekends, but just didn't happen. So I'm looking to get the front gate mural done and they'll be back from school in May-ish. So I'm looking to get, because all they got to do, all we got to do is just clean the wall off because the background's all painted on it. And then they just paint the mural on it. And then the building on the parking lot, I really hope to get that done next year too, but we'll see.
Basically, by the end of next next swim season, you figure it'll be done?
Um, that's what I'm praying for, yeah. That's what I'm pushing towards.
Okay. Anybody else? Any questions?
No.
Any questions?
I have a comment. I was going to make it part of my report. But thanks to the effort of the Borough Clerk, Kelsey, we found out that we may qualify, the pool may qualify for HUD funds. So the, may be able to upgrade the bathrooms, which are in dire need of repair. They are, they are, I think, original to the building.
As far as I know, yeah. I mean, they get painted every year.
Probably a hundred thousand bucks to do the two bathrooms. And maybe even might also, we'll have to see if we can qualify the roof over the.
Well, I know you and Mike have been working with Home Depot too to get supplies and labor and stuff.
We met with them.
Yeah, that's very close, yeah.
Because Home Depot, I don't know if we all know, but Home Depot donated thirty gallons of paint towards the mural, which is, the the paint is forty dollars a gallon. So twelve hundred bucks. We still needed more paint because the walls are like sponges. The concrete blocks are like sponges, but but I mean, all the paints for the actual color part of the murals, they gave us for nothing. So Home Depot has been very nice to us.
Yeah, and Home Depot, looks like that might be even March, Mark, but it's it's, Lenny sent me the bid, so I forwarded to the manager. So it could be around ten thousand in materials. They may have the volunteers to help, they may not. And if not, we may have to help out with DPW, so.
That's what I said, we're looking at creative ways to try less than that.
That's like twenty grand for a new, for a new roof.
Yeah. Twenty-one thousand was the estimate.
Okay. Anyone else up here have any questions? No? Anyone in the audience? We're not opening this up to the public for like any topic, but if you have any specific questions right now you just want to ask Mark, this would be your big chance.
What percentage of Middlesex people versus outsiders?
Actually, it's about the same. The the different memberships differ in a bit, like family versus single versus seniors. Even the seniors are pretty close, but the total membership of each is around six or seven hundred. It used to be different, but the Middlesex has dropped significantly over the years, the Middlesex memberships. And the out-of-town has increased. No, no.
No, they're different.
Non-resident, non-resident are higher, are higher, yeah.
Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Mark.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Mark.
All right. Okay, we're going to have a a little discussion here on Victor Crowell. I'm going to, Suburban is not here tonight. Actually, Mr. Thomasy, I understand you're going to help take us through this. If you'd come on, step up. You know, my understanding is that we're pretty much there. We got one or two more little tweaks and then we're off and running. You could go to the left and it might make your life a little easier. You can go to the left, it might make your life a little easier. Oh, wait, you got Lenny, Lenny will help you out over there.
I'm a member of the, my name is Rich Thomasy. I'm a member of the Parks Committee, there are some members of the Parks Committee here tonight. And, uh, I'm sure they have a few things to say about it if I miss, okay? First of all, I've, I've looked over the, um, the plans that were submitted a few weeks ago. And I have a few concerns. Um, one is the interior loop. I had envisioned the interior loop to, uh, go down Willow Road with a bridge, uh, on the Raritan side of the dam with a wooden walkway in that lower area. Back across a little bit of the lake, the lower side of Oak Drive to the Green Bridge and back Willow Road. The interior loop that was presented is a woodchip loop, which, as far as I'm concerned, uh, it's fine for walkers, all right? But very hard for anyone who would want to push a baby carriage or ride a bike with little kids. And it presents a unbelievable maintenance problem. And if it floods, the woodchips will float away. So that's, that's a concern about the interior loop. I'm sure other people can elaborate on it, all right? There is a sidewalk that they presented from the Green Bridge up along Oak Drive, across the top of the sledding hill. In effect, trying to create an exterior walkway around the lake, down Raritan Avenue and Union Avenue and back. Um, personally, I feel that putting a sidewalk on Oak Drive, um, gives the people who walk there a sense of safety that doesn't exist because of the road. And I think that area, that area, the Oak Drive area, really needs to be looked at a little bit more, right? There is a overlook that they presented up top there. And I don't know how, uh, how many people would use that, or, uh, it may, it may be better if it's a little bit lower, uh, towards the lake, right? Um, the, uh, there is a pavilion that's presented, uh, at the brand new park, which is down by the Green Bridge. I don't know if a pavilion is necessary, as opposed to just a few benches where people could eat their lunch and watch their kids play. Uh, pavilion might be an attractive nuisance, uh, for, uh, kids in the, in the off-season, we'll say, or at night. Because I know, living down, down there for the past 52 years, uh, there have been some groups around the, the boathouse that the police have had to respond to and so on. So to create another, uh, area, uh, may not be in our best interest. And the park closes at dark anyway, okay? Um, that's my sort of concern. The, the entrance to the park, uh, it's very creative if you got to look at the, at the plans. Um, uh, but I looked at it financially, I looked at it and a safety aspect. And I also looked at it as creating more space to the park. Let me explain. Uh, first of all, I feel that the investment we made with acquiring, um, Foreign Express was for the purpose of creating a wonderful bathroom experience for the people and to open up additional parking areas, okay? Uh, there are, if, hmm, very, uh, shall we say, I stepped it off, we'll say. There are approximately 13 parking spots, uh, in that area right now as it exists, okay? There are three, uh, regular parking spots and one handicap spot if they follow the lines in the existing parking area inside the park, okay? All right, their plan calls for, uh, expanding the interior parking space. And I, if I counted up on the plans, there are four now, and it looked like there are 12. So that, that to me, it's three times the space, okay? Their plan calls for the movement of the 9/11 memorial from its present location. And I understand that there are problems when it floods, okay? Um, to the area behind that new, um, parking lot in that open space right behind Foreign Express. That area also floods, okay? And it also calls for, in that area, a picnic grove, uh, an extension of the walking path, all right? And, uh, you have to understand that that is the only open area in the entire park. And there are six houses that border that area, all right? Um, and I just think, if you're going to move the 9/11 memorial, all right, let's move it here. Let's move it here. I was at the American Legion meeting, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And Shirley Penrose, who, who speaks, um, at the memorial, she suggested we move it here, all right? Not a bad idea, plus we have additional parking here also for that, and more people would see it, okay? All right. Paving area for the parking lot, I think, is out of the question, all right? I think moving the memorial financially is out of the question. Um, the, um, the loop, the nature loop or trail, uh, it doesn't need to be near any of those homes back there. You have a paved road, all right, where people can walk, all right? If you want to look for a nature trail, look on the Lincoln Avenue side of the Green Bridge. And put down some woodchips there, that might be a better spot for a, a nature trail. I also looked at the size of the park. The park is not very big, okay? Not very big. From barrier to barrier, having run recreation cross-country down there, it's a quarter of a mile, okay? Frank and I have, uh, we talked about it a little bit this week. If you move that one barrier, oh, oh, I forgot to mention, their plans called for, uh, a roadway, if you came in off 28 onto Willow Drive through the main entrance to the park. Their plans call for the creation of a road that would go right in front of Foreign Express and exit out onto 28, closing off one of the entrances that now exist into Foreign Express, okay? That, uh, that takes away a lot of the parking spaces. And hence, their, their recommendation to expand the existing parking lot, right? Uh, if you look at the park, from the barrier that exists at the current parking lot to the beginning of the park by Route 28 where you first pull in, all right? That is about 125 yards, okay? If you go with their plan, where you pull in, you have the option of going on the new road to Foreign Express or continuing down and parking in the park, all right? That's 125 yards of people in the park who have to worry about cars. If you move the barrier and close off the park in such a way that emergency vehicles and maintenance can't come in. If you move it 125 yards right to 28, all right? You have 125 more yards of park experience. You have the boardwalks there, you have the waterfalls, you have the grotto, all right? You have the 9/11 memorial, all within the park and no traffic, no traffic whatsoever, all right? And if you, um, make the entrance to the park right from the Foreign Express parking lot, um, that is the entrance. You come in off 28, you park, enter the park, you can leave. So that's a big concern, I think, um, the entrance to the park. Um, I think some of the expenses are, uh, uh, unnecessary, I think, all right? Um, let me see. There are many good things, don't get me wrong, all right? There are speed bumps, um, there's, um, a lot of nature stuff. I'm sure Claire can help out with that, plantings and so on. Um, there's some placements of benches and things, a lot of good things. But I think the entrance to the park has to be reworked, I really do, okay?
Okay, is that, is.
I'm sure.
Is that the opinion of the, of the committee?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I mean, it, these are, this is what we're talking about, these are the tweaks that we're talking about. Because at, at the end of the day, right? This is a concept plan that we use to get funding. Whatever that plan says, because no one's going to give us the full, the full monte in one shot. They're going to say, we can give you X amount of dollars, and then you sit there and you're going to have engineered plans to finalize and really get down into the nitty gritty of what's going to happen at these individual spots. The purpose of putting this together is to get something that's close, something that we can use to, to provide to grant writers and grant people that want to give us money. Because the first thing is that if you don't have a plan, you're stuck. They're not going to give you anything. So you have to have something to present, which is why a lot of this stuff is pretty conceptual, but there's not a lot of detail. I mean, you could just tell that because they just swagged a bunch of numbers, oh, this is going to be 2 million, this is going to be 3 million, this is a half a million. You know, when you get down to the nitty gritty, it's $14.95 for a Delta 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, serial number 6 faucet. It's, you know, that, that's how they come up with the plan. This is just, this is to get us in the game, you know? And, 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 yeah, it sounds like a lot of money sometimes, but you have to be in the game. And, and unfortunately, this is part of the, pardon my French sometimes, but part of the BS that you got to put up with in order, because no one's just going to say, I want to do a bunch of stuff at the park, and they're going to give you money. You got to have a plan. And if you have a plan, then they'll start to consider it. And they may actually even at that point come back and say, we need some more details here, what are you talking about? You know, and, and, and that's fine, and that's why sitting here right now, you know, Lenny's going to go back with Suburban. We'll rework a couple of these things. I mean, I'm not even on the, on, on the, uh, on the committee, but I totally agree, moving to 9/11 is ridiculous, you know? It's, it's, you know, no one will listen to me, especially for, you know, Frank, my favorite project is the, is the Lincoln statue there. If I had my way, that thing'd be moved 100 times already, but, you know, I understand, I'm not winning that battle, I get that. But, you know, the not. There you go. There you go, just so you know, but that's all right. But at any rate, just so you know, this is what we're talking about, concepts. So we're not, believe me, we're not sitting here saying, oh, Jesus Christ, this guy came up here and complained about every damn thing on this. But it's close, it needs a few tweaks, Lenny can get these done. We can get something approved that we can start hunting down and get some money and get some improvements done.
But you have to understand, there are 79 homes that are contiguous to the, to the park, all right? If you walk around, that's a lot of, a lot of houses. And I'm sure that, um, the residents don't want any construction or, uh, items, shall we say, closer to their home than now exist, all right? Uh, and, um, given the fact that it seems, uh, and I asked the question about flooding at the, at the last presentation, and they said how difficult it is to control it. You don't want to pave over area and exacerbate the, the possible, possibility of additional flooding. So, um, those are, those are some of the things. I'm sure that, um, uh, I have to run off to a funeral, but, um, I'm sure that some members of the committee will.
Sure, um, Rich, you got, thank you very much for your time, we do appreciate that. Lenny, do you want to add, you want to get up there and add a few things? Are you good? No Walmart, got it.
And then, uh, and then Frank after.
Uh, so I did speak to Suburban prior to this meeting, just so everybody's aware. Uh, again, this is a concept plan, so I am not for the woodchip path. I think it should be a permanent path, Mayor, because once the first flood comes, we're going to have.
You don't have to sell me, Lenny.
There's a couple of things, just so everybody on the committee's aware, um, the 9/11 memorial, uh, that's going to be coming off. And even the parking in the front, that parking lot behind Rich's house, that, that shouldn't be there at all. So those were one of my main concerns with Suburban. And, um, they did tell me that once I send them an email with all our concerns, they'll take it off of this draft and provide us with the final draft. So, um, again, this is a concept, so I wouldn't really put too much into this to where, let's get it where we want it to be. But, um, not to say that we're going to get grant money for $10 million and we can't do something that's not in the concept plan, we can always add to the plan. So don't try to exert all your energy into what if, what, how come it wasn't in there, it should have been in there. I definitely want to remove what you don't want in there, but we can always add whatever we want to kind of do. So, um, that's pretty much it.
And you have the five things that, that.
I do, I have everything written down, yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I, I took notes too, Lenny.
Yeah, so the draft is up here for anybody in the audience that would like to see the draft. Um, and again, once I submit this to Suburban, they'll provide us with a final, and that's going to be our final draft that's going to open up all the grants available to us. So, um, that's pretty much it, yeah.
Frank, you're chomping at the bit back there, you're it.
You're good, Frank, go ahead, you're good.
Come on, Frank.
You're good, Frank, go ahead, you're good.
Come on, Frank.
Rich said what the committee has voiced our concern before. And, uh, Lenny is going to follow through. And from my perspective, I look back, Mayor, Mike Conahan, we purchased the Foreign Express for parking. But parking is not there now. Parking should be in the Foreign Express and not build another road and keep it simple. But again, down the road, we can tweak things up, soften it up with some trees so when you're driving by, it doesn't look like ShopRite parking lot, there's ways to do it, engineering wise. But this will open up getting money, so that's it. We'll get this put to rest and move forward with our town engineer. When you go to Dula, it's like on a job, you go there, the job's being built, but they're changing things as you're working. I've worked on a lot of jobs where it changed the minute you got on the job. But I appreciate you spending the money for the Foreign Express. And there were concern, $50,000 for this engineering to get done. But without that, you would not get any money, so. Um, and that, oh, can I keep going for a while? I might as well get everything I had to say.
I'll tell you what, you got.
Being you through the dig about the Statue of Lincoln, I have to.
No, you can't talk about that, you got to wait for that one over there, keep it right to Victor Crowe.
Uh, okay, uh, I thought Mark Krantz tonight did a good job.
Uh, you're, you're venturing off the thing, that's public opinion.
I'll be back then.
You'll be back.
Okay.
You good, Frank, for Victor Crowe, you done?
Victor Crowe, done, let's put it to rest, Lenny will take care of it, and, uh, we'll go from there.
We'll see you in a little bit, Frank.
Okay.
We'll be waiting. Uh, okay, all right, um, anyone else on Victor Crowe? Anyone else on Victor Crowe? Either one.
Paul Kevich, two forty Hazelwood. Just, just one question, Mayor. It's been voiced by a lot of people. Why was the nine eleven memorial going to be moved? How, who came up with that idea?
I have no idea, Dave. I wasn't, I wasn't part of the original committee. It wasn't one of my ideas. I have no idea where it got from point A to point B. All I got to tell you is that sometimes they, they think about moving these things.
Because I was at all three of those public meetings. I didn't hear anybody mention that. And I thought that was the point of those meetings was input from everybody who was here and any officials who were here. And that wasn't any of the input that I heard. So I'm surprised to hear that, you know, I haven't seen those plans, obviously, but you guys have. To hear that that's part of it.
It, it was.
Even licensed to do whatever they wanted to do.
Well, that's some of the joys of being, dealing with engineering firms sometimes, but you know, at, at, on our end, they thought it was something that we might like based on the input that they have. Obviously, we all looked at it and was like, no, we don't want it. And that's as far as it's going. You know?
Well, I agree with, I agree it shouldn't be moved. But I'm just saying. I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I don't.
No, no, no. We're not taking it that way.
Well, I did hear one person suggest it. To me personally. So I'm just wondering why the consultants took it and ran it with it like that. I don't know.
Don't know.
It might have been, you know, Rich came up with a bunch of other things they'd like to see done. It might have been better off if they spent their time on some of those other things.
We agree. We're, we're all in agreement. And if it was, like I said, if we were talking about the Lincoln statue, I would have my hand up. Yes, it was me, but it wasn't me for this one.
I'm just, you know, I'm just wondering how it happened. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Anybody else? Okay, good. All right, that takes it. Care of Victor Crowe. Right now, we're going to move on. We have no appointments. We have no proclamations. Uh, ordinance for introduction.
An ordinance repealing ordinance number twenty one forty four twenty five and amending chapters four twenty seven, four twenty thirty six, four twenty fifty seven, and four twenty fifty nine of the Borough Land Use Ordinance of the Municipal Code of the Borough of Middlesex to define contractor storage yard and to include contractor storage yard as permitted conditional use in the IND industrial district and the high heavy industrial district and amend the conditions required for contractor storage yard as a conditional use.
Okay. Need a motion?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion at this point? It's just an introduction. Roll call, please.
Council President Conahan.
Yes.
Councilman De Senza.
Yes.
Councilman De Sino.
Yes.
Councilman Doty.
Yes.
Councilman Greigs.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Ordinance for public hearing and final adoption. I need a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Oh, wait, you got to read it first.
Ordinance number twenty one fifty seven twenty five, an ordinance fixing and terminating the salary range of certain officers and employees of the Borough of Middlesex.
Okay, I need a motion for open the public.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, anyone want to, the public hearing is now open. Anyone want to step up? Seeing no one want to step up, I like a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I like a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion up here? We're all pretty clear. Okay. Call the roll, please.
Council President Conahan.
Yes.
Councilman De Senza.
Yes.
Councilman De Sino.
Yes.
Councilman Doty.
Yes.
Councilman Greigs.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on, adoption of minutes.
Approval of the October fourteenth regular executive meeting minutes.
Need a motion?
Second.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's approved. All right. The mayor's report is going to be a, a little bit on the short side because we've had actually quite a lot of things going on. I, I'd like to say, just as far as I'm concerned, the, the interim business administrator, they've had their hands full. They're making progress. I'd like to say that I'm, personally, I'm very proud of both of these guys because they have a mantra of following up. And they're trying to take, they're trying to handle things as they come, get down to the, what the issue really is, and, and taking care of it. And, and we've had several meetings on this and, you know, I'm, I'm pleased with the progress. All right, let's see what else we have. We had the parks. We already talked about that. We also had a, we had a meeting with, it's way early days. But just so you know, we have had a, a, a meeting with, with possibly courting somebody for some redevelopment in the borough on the opposite side of the tracks. Real early days. I can't go into a lot of details, but I just want to throw that one out there so no one gets taken by surprise somewhere down the road. But when I say early days, it's very early days. So I wouldn't expect to hear anything too soon, but I just want to throw it out there. We're not sitting on our thumbs and doing nothing. We are, we're actively looking for people to come into Middlesex and, and work with us to, 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 to redevelop things. Right now, we're looking, or we're looking to have another town hall. We had one last year. It seemed like it went over, over pretty well. We're trying to finalize a date right now. I think we're looking somewhere around November twelve.
December, Mayor.
December, sorry. It was December. We, that's right. We started with November and we had to move to December. Uh, I think it's either December second or third. We're looking to have everyone, same format as last year. It's a two hour meeting, seven to nine, hard stop at nine. We're going to get the, the boards going again. We're going to talk about what we talked about last year, if we made any progress on it. And, you know, when I've had a chance to go through the list, yeah, we've done pretty good. You know, I'm not saying we're perfect in every area, but we've made a concerted effort that we're going to address the things that need to be addressed. Last thing I have here is that, you know, it's, it, it, of course, is, you know, it's election season, so it is, is what we determined to be, or at least I've always called the silly season. Um, I just would like to wish everyone that's been out there working at it on no matter what side of the aisle that you're on, good luck in the election. People work hard at this. And I think whether you win or lose, it's important that people have enough gumption to stand up and step up. And, and we wish them nothing but the best. And that, that does include the guy over here to my left, whose name's on all the little signs in Somerset County over there. So good luck, Chris. We hope you, uh, you, hope you know what you're getting yourself in for. Let's just put it at that.
Appreciate that, Mayor.
All right. Uh, that's the end of my report for tonight. Moving on, Council President.
Uh, all right. Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to, um, I want to share the results of the twenty twenty five Best Practices Survey from our CFO, Carolyn Benson. Uh, every year, the state requires all municipalities to complete the Best Practices Survey. It's a series of questions, both scored and unscored, to gauge if the municipalities are following required state statutes and mandatory deadlines, as well as gather information pertaining to current topics under current consideration for new legislation. Uh, the scored questions this year focused on topics like required components for our website, meeting minutes, calendars, audits posted, budgets posted. It also asked for specific links to the pages provided that information. Another section wanted to confirm confirmation that all filing dates for budget adoption, annual debt statement, annual financial statement, and audit have been met and that the documents had been properly submitted to the state. Other scored sections involve questions about financial disclosure compliance and any shared services for statutory positions like CFO, tax collector, municipal clerk, and tax assessor. The unscored sections focused on emergency services, grant funding, opportunity zones, and shared services. These unscored questions are always a good indicator of things that the state plans to focus on in the upcoming year and things that may be discussed in legislative sessions. Uh, the town, Middlesex Borough, needed to score thirty two or above to continue to qualify for our full allotment of state aid next year. Uh, Middlesex's score for twenty twenty five was thirty seven point five. Okay. At our next meeting, November twenty fifth, we will recognize our longtime firefighter, Bill Winkelman out of Pierce. He'll be our next pillar of Middlesex. The Friends of the Library will be hosting its next program this Sunday, November second at two P M. It's always in the community room. The program will feature Flip Peters and Kevin Brown's songs you know and love. I want to thank Susan Edwards, as always, for everything that she does for the Friends. She has a robust program calendar, and there's usually two or three events a month. So she's done a great job. Uh, thank you, Mark, for presenting tonight on the Swimpool Commission. I know a lot of the commission is here. Thank you to you all. I know you guys are very dedicated and spend a lot of time working on the pool. Um, at our next meeting, we will discuss a workshop, workshop topic around e-bikes and scooters, which Chief Geis will make some recommendations to improve safety. So that'll be next month's meeting, November twenty fifth. I also want to thank, I know the mayor touched on this, the interim Borough Administrator, Matt Geist, for all his efforts so far. I know it's early in the process, but excellent job. I also want to thank interim Deputy Borough Administrator. That's a new role for the borough. Leonard Vidal, for all his efforts so far. Excellent job. And then both of you, nice teamwork. I know over the last two or three weeks, you guys have been seamless. And I wanted to recognize you. So thank you both. Mayor, that's it.
That's it? All right. Mr. Lawrence is not here. Go.
Recreation. Ball basketball, there are thirty three registered. The coaches will meet on November eighteenth. Yoga classes are continuing with twelve participants. Ball soccer, pre-K, there are fifteen registered. Kindergarten to third grade, there is a hundred and seventeen registered. Fourth, fourth to eighth grade, there's fifty seven. Uh, the Game Time Grant is a no-go. The original thought was that it was a full grant, but it's a matching grant. I think it, it's only a twenty five percent. So it's, it's not going to work. Community events, Winter Wonderland and Bonfire, December seventh at Mountain View Park. Hopefully, weather will cooperate. We'll have a great night as we have the last couple of years. And as I mentioned before, I want to thank Borough Clerk Kelsey for getting us at least preliminary that we may qualify for HUD funds to upgrade the bathrooms, which are in dire need of. I mean, they're original. What's forty years, fifty years old? And sixty. So hopefully, we can get those as a, as a grant. And that would maybe bring in some new membership. And might also qualify for the move.
All right, thanks. Bobby.
DPW areas have finally been removed. Not finally removed, but a lake, meaning the cold weather's coming, which I'm not. Hydro raking, boats bow before the storm. People deeper there. Give us a little room, maybe for some flooding. Lenny and his guys assisted environmental committee digging under eighty holes for her, her planting event this past Saturday. That's also my environmental. Last oak pickup is October twenty ninth. Please call public works to step in. Forest department has begun leaf cleanup of all properties. Road department is doing repairs to the salt shed, preparing for the storm this Thursday. Possible two, three, four rains. Basins are clean, the barricades are ready, and trucks are ready. Leaf bags are still available, but next month. Forest Environmental, which I just said, well, the week prior, Claire gave away eighty trees. Not Claire, the committee, on the ten eighteen. Also this week, this weekend, past weekend, they planted a hundred and eighty trees. Green Team volunteers. And the solar simplified logistics are complete and will be on the November twentieth agenda. The borough will receive fifty dollars per road customer. In the next meeting, environmental is November eighteenth. And not much on J. Love. Their next meeting is November twelfth. That's it.
All right. Just so you guys know, I know they're in for at least a hundred and fifty dollars because I think there's at least three of us up here that signed up, and I'm one of them. Bobby, I think Mike too. Yep. Four. All right. It's, it's. Yeah. Quite a good thing. So don't miss out on that one. Because I mean, we looked at it a hundred ways to Sunday to try and find the, like, where the loophole is.
There isn't.
Not, not at this point, that's for sure. Okay, you done, Bobby? Yeah? Kevin?
I have the police report tonight, um, for September. Fifteen hundred and seventy six calls to service, For September, fifteen hundred and seventy-six calls to service, fifteen dollar arrests, two hundred and thirty MV summonses, twenty-one radar, thirty-five motor vehicle crashes. For the National Incident Based Reporting System, there was five crimes, two were cleared, so that's forty percent. The over here, and they made it so small this month, detectives, man, I was like, holy cow. I don't know if anybody else saw that.
That's Robin, she's testing you over there.
Yeah. There was two possessions that they were drug offenses that they're investigating. There was one death investigation. They did twenty-four firearms permitting. They have other projects and tasks that they were, there's a total of forty of them going on. They did fingerprinting twenty-four for NCIC. So our detective bureau always seems to be busy behind the scenes, that nobody even knows what they're doing half of the time, but they're working diligently to clear cases.
The chief knows.
Yeah, he's about the only one. They did a DA drug takeback. The chief reported that there are a hundred and twelve pounds of drugs were given back to him. They did one earlier in the year, and it's over two hundred and forty pounds for this year, which is quite a significant amount when you look at little pills being put in there. That's an awful lot of drugs that were taken back. They have coffee with a cop early in the month.
Yes.
Next month, you'll see your officers growing beards, no shave November, if I'm not mistaken, which they all look forward to, but they can never seem to talk the chief into doing it.
You got a head start this year.
One of these years, we're hoping. That's all I have. Do you have anything that I missed?
November fourteenth, crafting with the seniors.
Yep, crafting with the seniors. They are doing on the fourteenth over at the rec center.
Correct.
That's it?
We're all invited to that. I'm sure everybody here got that email. Our new interim administrator makes sure we get that. And on that note, as the administration liaison, I gotta say, the communication has been phenomenal. Like every day, I open up my email now, and I'm like, oh my God, what are they doing? Because I look at it at lunch, so that's most of my lunchtime now. So I commend both of yous. It's been fantastic. I thank you both. That's all I have.
Okay. Ken?
Yes. Board of Health, the rabies clinic, as most of us know, is canceled for November here, but there are other clinics in the area. I just want to point them out in case anybody needs to go. On Saturday, November first, the Saturday from nine to ten, there's one in Greenbrook. On November eighth, from ten to noon, there's one in Berners Township. Saturday, November fifteenth, nine to ten thirty, there's one in Fender at the Firehouse. November twenty-second, from nine to noon, there's one in South Brunswick at the DPW. And on Saturday, December sixth, from nine to ten, there's one at the Watchon Firehouse. Middlesex is moving towards a voucher program that is expected to start next year. We'll be able to go to local vets at any time with the voucher instead of a scheduled rabies clinic day. The meetings for the Board of Health, they'd like to attend. That's the Thursday of the month at six-thirty in the community room. The shade tree commission, just a reminder that if you're removing trees, you may need a permit, so it's good to check if you, if you want to try to remove a tree on your property, whether it's a borough tree or not. The shade tree meets the second Thursday of the month at seven PM in this room. Resting zoning, a reminder that if you have rental property, you do need to register and pay the appropriate fees, so make sure, take care of that. We're having great, you know, responses about the new inspector. It's all positive, so that's definitely a good thing since we have full-time zoning inspector now. And, you know, also a great job to the administrator and the assistant administrator, definitely seeing good changes in the council. Appreciate your hard work. And let's just a reminder to get on, get on a vote on Tuesday. No matter which side you're on, it's, it's always good to hear your voice out there. That's all I have.
Okay. All right. Time for, time for the interim administrator and deputy administrator reports.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I'll start with the Class Three Police Officers. The borough is still working on the memorandum of agreement with the Board of Education. On October thirteenth, our attorney, Chris Corsini, communicated with the board's attorney to clear up some concerns they had regarding some small details with regards to training. We're waiting to hear back with any follow-up questions or a completed MOU. Mountain View Park, the update there, PSENG permits to cut power to the power lines by the foundation of the new restroom facility has been paid for by the contractor. The crane company has availability for the installation of the bathroom facility, so we should be able to install those bathrooms soon. The curbing and drainage are complete. Lenny, that's correct? We're now waiting for delivery of new playground equipment, which is scheduled to arrive on Monday, November tenth. The contractor is planning on starting the installation on the eleventh, so they want to get started right away. This is going to replace the equipment that was destroyed in the arson over the summer. There's one concern, and I'll let Lenny explain it. There's a pit or a pour-in-place rubber surfacing that is supposed to be incorporated into this playground that may be delayed depending on weather because of the temperatures. Is there a specific temperature that they can't?
So if it's below that, they can't put it down? Now, that's gonna go after November tenth?
Correct.
So November tenth, the stuff shows up. Like, when do you think it'll be put up? So basically, we gotta hope for a warm Thanksgiving. Okay, and, and I did have one quick question. Is that you said the bathrooms would be done soon. Define soon. Are we gonna be, are we gonna have, are we gonna have a bathroom before Thanksgiving?
Yes, PSENG, they called me today, right after I got the phone. They are coming to install one of the poles that have been down for the past four, five months, and now they're on the radar. The contract was paid for finally in front of the contract that has to hold up. So now that it's paid for, I'm on top of the paperwork, I guess, to keep on my
All right.
To make sure we're good.
Okay, thank you.
We're gonna have a ribbon cutting?
That's fine. I, I knew Lenny had some interest, information that we were gonna need on a bunch of these parts of the reports. A lot of this we work on together. The senior Meals on Wheels transit van had a transmission issue. It was taken out of service because it wasn't shifting properly. Our mechanics tried to look at it, but it had, inevitably, it had to go to the dealer. Lenny's team brought it over there. It was repaired and replaced. Is the whole trans replaced on that, or was it repaired?
It was repaired.
So, and it was all under warranty. We just made it in under the warranty, so I'm glad that his team took it over there. It was out of service from September twenty-sixth and put back in service last week. Greenbrook Road has a, and Starlet Drive, the guardrail was destroyed in a motor vehicle crash on September sixth. The cost estimate to replace the guardrail or guide rail was about just a little over seventy-five hundred dollars. The claims adjust their issued payment of over five thousand, which is less than the two, twenty-five hundred dollars deductible. Our insurance company is handling subrogation with the driver's insurance company to obtain the deductible. So we're currently waiting for the check from the insurance company once received. Len, you're gonna schedule work to replace it, correct? Borough Hall Roof, the EDPM, I'm sorry, EPDM, Synthetic Rubber Roofing Membrane has been installed. Lenny and I, Lenny followed this through. Had to do a couple of different things to change the way people came in and the office space was used in the building, but it was, how many pieces of roofing sheathing were replaced?
Sixteen pieces of that have been delivered. I mean, that was one of our biggest issues, so how to deal with this. So we're, we're almost done, about ninety-seven percent done, as the chief is reporting. We're waiting for, I guess, the public to go in for that part of the day.
Yep, next week.
And it's basically right over where we are right now.
Bruce.
And the old roof was, what, about thirty-five?
They said thirty-five, we're thirty-six years old.
Yeah, and that's a long time for, for that type of roofing. Yeah. Chief, sorry.
Army Corps of Engineers. The Army Corps of Engineers project is clearing trees near South Lincoln Avenue, Drake Avenue, Pershing Avenue, and near the former landfill. Lenny raised some traffic, I'm sorry, some safety concerns about pedestrians having access to the construction area near the levee system. And Army Corps is in the process of obtaining RFP for fencing around the levee and current work zone. So I thought that was a, a very important thing that he went and reached out for them. Additionally, there, there was a lot of trees that have to be taken down for this project. So Lenny's been in talks with Army Corps about providing a donation to the borough for new tree plantings since so many were removed, and that's positive. You're getting positive responses.
I am getting a lot of response. They're aware of obviously the trees that we're picking up, so we're working on people to leave that donation from that. For the next phase, like I mentioned, that's not opposite.
About how many trees they knocked down-ish?
Hundreds.
Hundreds?
Hundreds.
It's terrible.
Yeah. It was a lot, yeah. Because it was pretty close, tight pack.
There was, yes, there was hundreds.
Okay.
Yes, and even especially like two fractions, um, there was some safety issues that came out, so there were a few other tensions involved with the levee system.
Fence.
Autistic child warning signs. The police department received some concerns from parents about installing autistic child warning signs. Sergeant Arichi on our traffic safety unit worked with Lenny and the Department of Public Works to install signs on the two-hundred block of Fourth Street and after receiving approval from Middlesex County, the seven-hundred block of Lincoln Boulevard. So you'll see those signs are up, they're constructed, and hopefully, it's helpful to the motoring public and to members of our community. Lastly, on behalf of Lenny Vidal and I, just want to thank you for your confidence in the council. And both of us, we're working hard to be responsive and efficient. We understand the weight of this responsibility and take it very seriously. Your confidence empowers us to work even harder, and we look forward to building a better future for our town. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So what have you done for us lately? All right. Okay, moving on. Let's open it up for the privilege of the floor.
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Oh, boy. Here we go. Ah, just playing.
All the questions are for Lenny.
You ready, Lenny? All right, Frank, don't forget, name and add. No, no, you're at that one now. No, no, taking over the meeting now, Frank, come on.
Mayor, I'm gonna give you a compliment. No, because coming here tonight, I thought to myself, I'm tired, I'm dirty, I gotta take a shower, I'm hungry, but so is everybody else up there. But you're here, so I appreciate everything everybody does up there. It's easy just to say, you know, F it and not come. You're up here doing a good job, and
Wait, before you go any further, name and address for the people in TV land.
What's that?
You gotta say for the people for the record. Name and address.
Frank Ryan, three oh three Maple Street, Middlesex.
Thank you. Nice to see you, Mr. Ryan.
Going back to listening to Mark France, here's what I saw tonight. A volunteer, but on top of his game, he knows it. It's hard to do, again, to be a volunteer, but I thought did a very good job. I don't know what you people thought, but I thought he did a good job, so that's it. And but he is a pain in the ass for the manager. Did a very good job tonight, Mark. Thank you, and thanks for your time. Well, going back to being tired, Bobby DeCino, that's the most tired guy, had to go back to work a forty-hour week job, so I can imagine what he goes through, right? He said his pension's a little bit. And I want to thank Chris Corsini, who are stepping up a notch. Down the road, you're gonna see Senator Chris Corsini. So I'm proud, and I know everybody here is proud of Chris, who we have, unbelievable attorney, and he's gonna get elected. His grandmother's up there saying the rosary, so.
I need her.
That's it, Frank.
That's it. Good job, guys. That's it. And I'm, Lenny, great job. Chief, good job.
Thanks, Frank.
All right, Frank.
Sounds good.
That was the best you've ever been.
April, Kevich, two forty Hazelwood. Tough act, Wildwood Frank. I just wanted to say, Mayor, echo what you've been saying, also what Frank said. You know, I, I come to a lot of these meetings, I sit in the audience, I've been sitting in the audience for years, and it just seems like, especially tonight, our interim deputy and our interim administrator, I learned more things sitting in the back during your administrative report tonight than I have in a long time. You know, I just, the detail and just a lot of little bits and pieces, not necessarily things that you're gonna, you know, think about two days from now, but just, you know, if you live in town, you want to know. So I think you guys are doing a good job too. Just a couple of quick things. We've mentioned a couple of times tonight that Mr. Corsini's running for surrogate. Mr. Corsini.
I'm still here in twenty, twenty-six.
You will, if, if you, if you win, you will continue.
If I lose, if I draw, I'm
You're still borough attorney.
With the deference to the appointment process.
Right, no, I, I just I didn't know if there was, I didn't, I didn't know what the legal thing on that. Okay, so you're still here, okay. All right, one other thing, Mayor. You know, we all follow the news, and there's, you know, shutdown going on in Washington, and one thing they've been talking a lot about, especially the last couple of days, is SNAP benefits. Do you have any number on how many people in Middlesex, or how many households in Middlesex get SNAP benefits? I didn't see anything online.
Honestly, I, I have no idea. I would think the, the closest way of finding that out would be, you know, the schools with the free, the, the low, what is it, Shannon, what's the name of it? The lunch, what do they call it? There's a name for it. Free and reduced lunch, thank you very much. I mean, I would tend to think that most of those probably qualify at some point for SNAP, but
Well, I, I looked, the numbers I could find online said that out of Middlesex County, the total number of households, eight percent receive SNAP benefits. So I tried to extrapolate that out a little bit. I think I, I don't remember what the number was. I think I found a number that said there's fifty-five hundred households in Middlesex. So if you extrapolate that out, it's several hundred households potentially, because there could be some towns like New Brunswick that have more than eight percent, but, but, you know, we're probably talking several hundred households in Middlesex get SNAP benefits. And I know you guys don't run the program, but, you know, if this thing goes haywire over the weekend, like some people are predicting, and you guys start getting phone calls or emails next week, some single mother in Middlesex that's got two kids and doesn't have any food, is, is borough prepared to respond to that in any way, or to direct them in any way, or, or, you know? I know you have the legal responsibility to do that, but I'm just wondering, is, is there anything, have you thought about that at all?
I can answer that. We have a very close relationship with Replenish. That's the Middlesex County Food Bank. We're doing our food drive now in Middlesex Borough. Our police department has participated or created our own, where we've collected tons of food every season for many, many years, since its inception, since we started it. Soon after I became chief, I do know that there's a need for it, and that's part of the reason why we do it. There's not a lot of police departments that do it, but I do have some data here. There are about fifty-seven thousand Middlesex County residents who receive SNAP benefits that could be impacted. So it is a serious thing, and I would, I would look to the county for some guidance on that, but we, we do something very local here with it, and that's why it's so important that our residents who can afford to participate and help out, it affects our neighbors.
Probably fish also.
What's that, fish? I know, Chief, you and I have talked about that previously, you know, maybe in the past when you cut these food drives. So if you guys were to get a call next week from somebody or two weeks down the road, you would probably direct this family to go to that food bank and see if they could help them out.
Correct.
Go right ahead.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Name, name.
Jennifer Clark, three sixty-eight Orkney, that I work for, up in West Street, I live in West Street, County, and I am on the O U V O B at this point, about what's happening with SNAP, so I just want to comment on this a little bit. One of the things that they're talking about is turning to local food pantries, and in this area, we have a Littlesex Elks that does pop up food pantries. I will say that they are a little restrained right now, since they're flooding, but then the other, Seventh Day Advent also does a food pantry within this town, so I would encourage people to refer to that area. They are both giving food by Replenish. I will say, I connected with somebody in our town just this week, or I'm sorry, just in the last two weeks, and right now, they're really struggling to come up with Thanksgiving meals for families, and they're at a loss of how to give families turkeys, because Replenish has said that they're not going to be able to hand them out this year. So I would refer the local numbers, if you can talk to the Elks about possibly donating food to people that are involved in that.
All right, thank you. Emily. Didn't Joe teach you anything?
Emily, this is three, two, one Salvatore Avenue. I don't want to correct Jen, but I know for a fact that Middlesex Elks is totally closed as far as their food bank. Not available anymore, and they don't actually know when, as she said, because of the flooding.
No, you're not wrong, but I did have a text, so they talked about possibly trying to do distribution.
Then you know that.
Yeah, but that's not in stock.
Okay.
Thank you.
I mean, basically, if you have an issue, at this point, look out for the local food pantries is, is where they're looking for right now.
I just want to make one last point before I sit down. This is what I had. I started looking, asking about food pantries, and the information we got from the chief spurred a couple of comments in the audience. Type of thing that is often missing here when questions get asked, but can I, this was an information there that helps.
Anybody else? All right, seeing nobody else stepping forward, if I could need a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, time for the consent agenda. You're up.
Resolution two ninety-two, twenty twenty-five, approval of the twenty twenty-five sewer billing waived appeals. Resolution two ninety-three, twenty twenty-five, authorizing participation in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Sustainable Jersey PSENG Energy Efficiency Partnership Program. Resolution two ninety-four, twenty twenty-five, acceptance of standing reports. Resolution two ninety-five, twenty twenty-five, amending resolution two seventy-eight, twenty twenty-five, for block one sixteen, lot three, for sewer accounts. Resolution two ninety-six, twenty twenty-five, amending the Middlesex Borough Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual to amend section three, paid and unpaid time off policies, section three E, sick leave policy, paragraph twenty twenty-two, paragraph twenty-two. Resolution two ninety-seven, twenty twenty-five, authorizing the mayor to execute the employment contract for Department of Public Works Superintendent Leonard Vidal for a term of March first, twenty twenty-six through March first, twenty thirty. Resolution two ninety-eight, twenty twenty-five, authorizing the mayor to execute the employment contract for Department of Public Works Assistant Superintendent Christopher Emmons for a term of April first, twenty twenty-six through April first, twenty thirty. Resolution two ninety-nine, twenty twenty-five, authorizing Lincoln Hose Company, number one, to conduct coin toss events at the intersection of Mountain Ave and Lincoln Boulevard, pending all required documentation being filed in the clerk's office prior to the event. Resolution three hundred, twenty twenty-five, authorizing the execution of a right-of-entry agreement for fire training exercise drills on block one twenty-six, block four point one six. Resolution three oh one, twenty twenty-five, authorizing the purchase of an asphalt hot hatch or dump trailer for the Department of Public Works under Co-op ESCNJ. Resolution three oh two, twenty twenty-five, special items of revenue and appropriation sustained enforcement grant. Resolution three oh three, twenty twenty-five, approving the proposal from Colliers Engineering and Design in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars for professional engineering services. Resolution three oh four, twenty twenty-five, authorizing the purchase of a new roadsweeper for the Public Works Department under Sourcewell Contract. Resolution three oh five, twenty twenty-five, hiring probationary police officer Michelle M. Gladys at an annual salary of fifty-two thousand, fifty-eight dollars, effective October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Resolution three oh six, twenty twenty-five, appointing Kelsey Meister to serve as fund commissioner for the Central Jersey Joint Insurance Fund for twenty twenty-five.
Okay, I know we're gonna pull two of these. Six and seven are getting pulled. Anyone else? Okay, could I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Second. The only thing I have to say is I'm always happy to see another probationary officer coming on. It's been a while, but it's always good to get the right person in, that's for sure. Yep. Yep. Uh, anybody else? Call the roll.
All right, Council President Conahan.
Yes.
Councilman DeSenza.
Yes.
Councilman DeCino.
Yes.
Councilman Doty.
Yes.
Councilman Griggs.
Yes.
Okay.
Do I have to do these separate, or can do them both together?
Both together.
We can do both together. Okay, so we're gonna, I need a motion for resolution two ninety-seven and two ninety-eight.
Motion. Second.
Okay.
He beat me.
He beat you to the punch. Okay, any discussion? Nope, okay, call the roll, please.
Council President Conahan.
Yes.
Councilman DeSenza.
Yes.
Councilman DeCino.
Yes.
Councilman Doty.
Refusing myself.
And Councilman Griggs.
Yes.
We're stuck with you for a while, Lenny. All right. Knock on wood, it's all good. Okay, next, uh, non-consent agenda?
Resolution three oh seven, twenty twenty-five, pale flames.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
All right, any discussion on the items? It's pretty straightforward. All right, call the roll, please.
Council President Conahan.
Yes.
Councilman DeSenza.
Yes.
Councilman DeCino.
Yes.
Councilman Doty.
Yes.
Councilman Griggs.
Yes.
Okay, uh, agenda workshop item, cottage food businesses.
It just came up, um, in our J-Lub, cause Matthew came to, um, and asked about this, we have no awareness for this, so, I sent an email, Chris responded, so he's familiar with it also, but some of the things, um, I never, never even heard of cottage food business, but it's like nuts, anything that's not temperature regulated, like foods, like catering foods, like nuts, cookies, very popular, um...
Candies.
Candies, yeah, and...
Are these primarily resident-based?
Completely home-based.
It's all home-based, right?
Home-based, yes. Now, we have a sample on it, you can see in your, your packet, um, Denon has one, a couple of things that are different that we don't have. Denon fees twenty-five hours, Flemington's a hundred and twenty-five, um, and the hours are a little different. Um, Denon has eight AM to eight PM by appointment, only not more than one pickup every fifteen minutes. Flemington has no times posted. So, some of the things that I got from Matthew, here's some of his recommendations. Uh, past applicants stated that they will have only two to three pickups per day, which he feels is fair. So, I mean, that's something we wanna think about. No residential sales, only pickups, no walk-up windows like you're going for getting ice creamed dome, have to be, you know, bulk sales. Um, and he recommends, if you're caught doing that, fines starting at three hundred dollars, I guess that's something big, but... Um, another one, he said, is no commercial truck pickups, must be picked up by cars, vans, or transit cars. Uh, another of his issues, pickup times can be determined by the governing body, I recommend nine AM to three thirty for good traffic. Um, all cottage food licenses must have zoning application, which we don't have, we'd have to make. Also, he said, I would like to know if we wanna make people obtain the change of use of property due to the fact that they will now be considered a home business. Chris, you, uh, you had to chime in on this.
Is that a J-Lub question?
So, in Flemington, when we did this in Flemington, we changed the ordinance to allow, to allow it as a permitted use in the order, in the zones that we thought it wasn't appropriate, right? Um, you can do that, or you could go the promo route, I would typically, I think it was done the right way in Flemington, pick the zones you wanted in, and change your ordinance to allow home baking in those zones. But you can do it the other way, too, just build more orders. Were we getting pinged on this one? I mean, uh...
He said he's gotten, uh, about ten or twelve.
Yeah, that's a lot, in a town this size, that's a lot.
Yeah. Also, what does he say, um, I think we should have a limit on how many we allow, due to the fact the traffic may be a problem if we have too many in the borough. He thinks fifteen's a good number.
Huh?
Total of fifteen.
Tough and limited license.
All right, well, yeah, this is, you're the professionals, though.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a good idea, I just think...
Well, right, but we don't even have any right now, right?
You have none that are permitted.
None that are permitted, they're just people running little cookie things out of their house.
Like, he's got pending ones that he doesn't know how to prove because we don't have any cookies.
I think it's a good find, I think it's a good catch, something you guys should do.
Let's hope with fees, how much fees we want, I mean, it goes as low as twenty-five or as much as a hundred, that's the two.
Honestly, I'm, I'm a little out of, out of loop on, like, how big this really is. I mean, are you talking about somebody who's making something for a church bait sale and selling it there, or are we talking about...
Something for sale.
Are we talking about something that, you know, you go to, like, Quick Check or something like that, they'll have a pile of, you know, Mimi's Cookies or something like that?
So those you typically needed industrial-sized kitchen for? Um, it would be more of...
So who they selling to?
Online, eBay.
Online, like weddings and stuff like that?
Yeah, even that, you start to verge on, you need for...
Commercial?
Commercial kitchen. But you, you could, I mean, you'd need a pretty big kitchen for, to produce enough for a wedding and keep the rest of your business going. This was a big deal about ten years ago in the state, friend of mine, hers, well, she was on the leading edge of this, uh, as a home baker herself, and once the trend got the law changed, uh, now we're starting to see it percolating in communities, so I'm glad to see it.
Well, what's like the breakpoint? When does it become not a hobby, but a business?
I don't know, it's a question, Jen.
I think it's a business anyway, it's not a hobby. This is, you're selling it, you, you're looking...
You're making it how, how many hours, how often you...
Well, I mean, I mean...
You'd be surprised, you'd be surprised. It generates a lot of, a lot of income.
All right, put a number on it.
Fifty grand a year.
Really?
I would say between twenty-five and fifty, that would be my number.
So, when, once you start selling twenty-five thousand dollars worth of homemade whatever, that's when you, you would, you would need one of these licensed?
You need a state health license prior to coming here.
Yeah, so that was what the law was, the law changed to create that license.
So...
And allow it to...
So basically, if you need one of those, that's when we should be asking for one of these.
Prior to the, prior to coming here, you have to have that.
Yeah, and that in Flemington really references that license, but incorporates that license by reference in there, in the ordinance, which I did not personally drive, but I...
And that sort of drives the thing right there, I mean, if you gotta have a state license, and that automatically means that if you, you have one, you should have one of these.
Yeah, I think this is typically, this is, it's a circumstance where we piggyback on what the state is doing, right?
Right.
But the problem is in the land use, because oftentimes we find it to be unpermitted in the zone, that's where Matthew was running up against this problem. You should license anyway. Well, you have to address the zoning.
Well, I don't think you'd want it to be like in, in a factory or something, I mean, you'd think, like, a home use, I would think it's in a residential only, we should allow it.
Yeah, I mean, yes, intuitively, yes, a factory could, could outfit its own industrial kitchen, right, and then produce cookies.
They'd have to get a COO.
And get it grand scale, right, I mean...
Think of it like this, restaurants have problems with desserts, most of them do, they have to buy commercially, you could have a place that's making cheesecakes.
And just sell them to them, yeah.
And sell it to the restaurant.
That's very common, I'm sure, I think Joe's got it right, exactly right.
Maybe you catch it at the, maybe you catch it when they go for the construction permit because they're sitting there asking, you know, putting in an industrial-sized oven in the basement, you know?
They really don't, they, they don't, you know, you don't need a, an industrial-sized, you can get without a permit, a regular oven, a, a commercial oven, but a lot of kitchens are doing that, at-home kitchen where you're putting in a commercial stove. I mean, you don't need any special permit.
Have to bump out the house for that.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes, it doesn't work.
No, I'm just, I was just being facetious, sorry about that.
So where do we go from here?
So where, where do we go from here? What are we trying to do? Do, do we, do we review, do we ask Chris to review this for, for complete?
I have not seen Matthew's comments yet, Bobby just read them, they're excellent. Uh, you pick the ones you like, the ones you don't like, um, you look at the zoning aspect of it, which I think is important, that's probably how this started, um, and then tell me what to do, and I do it.
Okay, well, the zoning aspect, is that, that's something we refer to the J-Lub, or we just ask them first?
Uh, you, you refer to the J-Lub, you may want to consult with them when, when the planning board meets again, you know, just to see what, what their recommendations is.
They want me to come here, that's, that's the way it went to first.
So we got the chicken and the egg?
Well, you could, it's two things, the regulatory aspect of it, you can start and do whatever you want. Um, the zoning aspect...
Just where we want it, basically, from there.
I think if you wanna have Bobby communicate that back to them, great, 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 start with that.
So we can come up with what we want, fees and hours, and just where we want it.
Yeah, tell me what you wanna do, and I'll write it, sure thing.
Well, I'll tell you what, let's make it easy on everybody, take it, read it, send your, uh, send your things to Chris.
And then if he wants to me, Matthew's comments, because I don't think I have, I'm pretty sure, I'm, I'm very happy to write whatever you guys want, this is a good thing, good, good time, too.
Okay.
Okay.
Any, any, Kenny?
I would think they, they just probably do it with the other ones, so...
All right, we can send it in, go from there.
Before it gets there, people can't do it.
Sure.
People gotta be able to pick it up at night.